Good morning, good morning. Do we have, oh, we're waiting on Roy. Is Roy here? Yes, there he is. Sorry about that. Alright, good morning, everybody. Welcome. This is a meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District. That's a mouthful. Um, thank you for, uh, for hosting us, Ms. Kapalusis. My name is Alexis Jarborough. I have the distinct privilege of, uh, serving as Chair of this board. Very excited to be here and to meet you all. Um, I wanted to first thank our outgoing supervisors, Ron Perry, Charbel Barica, and Craig Matier for their service on this board. And to continue to thank you all, uh, our supervisors, Angsten Ziegler, for continuing to serve on this board with us. And welcoming our other two supervisors, uh, to my right, Supervisor John Gilbert and Scott Workman. Welcome. Um, of course, I would not be here had it not been for Governor DeSantis. I am very grateful for his trust in me to serve in this position. I will take it very seriously and do the best that I can to serve the district. Um, I also would like to recognize our District Administrator Stephanie Kapalusis, who probably does not wish to be recognized. Um, but she is a great Floridian and, um, could teach a masterclass in servant leadership, and it is going to be a privilege to work alongside of you as well. Um, I look forward to meeting the other members of our district here today and continuing the good work that you are doing here. So with that, we should get started with our invocation. We have Billy Dover, uh, Chaplin. Where's Mr. Dover? Okay. Good morning, Mr. Dover.
Is it on? Oh, yeah, I guess so. Uh, good morning, ma'am, and congratulations on your position. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here, being that I'm an old retiree from here. Uh, and I was asked to do this and I'm, I'm, I'm honored. So, thank you. Uh, one of the things that Stephanie, uh, usually I try to preach a little bit, but I'm not a preacher, so not really. I'm gonna tell you a little story. I said, uh, how do you see resources you have? Uh, the body of Christ has excellent resources and strategies, the most, uh, they are mostly produced by organizations alone for their own unique ta- task. A sense of ownership is essential for partnering agencies and churches to extensively use a resource. Our natural res- our natural mindset that was created by them for them, not by us for us. The result of actually doing something of this nature is there's, there is a powerful resource. It has the potential to travel far and be used and adapted widely. The concept of growing, going slow together so we can all go faster, uh, is easy to say, but emotionally and physically hard. The scripture for today is Ephesians four sixteen. For whom the whole body joined and held together by every joint with which it is equipped, when each part is working properly makes the body grow so that builds itself up in love. Let us pray. Our most gracious only father, right now, we just wanna, uh, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for each person that is here. Just continue to bless this board. Uh, bless reading, uh, bless, bless, bless this organization. Uh, dear Lord, just continue to guide each and every division head here. Let them remember that we are all one and that they, that we must work together for the better good. Dear Lord, just continue to, uh, bless our first responders, our service personnel and their families. Protect them in everything that you do. Protect this board, and may everyone go home safely. For this, we ask in our most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask Chief Ferrari, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, we are moving on to the Safety Minute. Mr. Fernandez. I have not met you yet. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Very good. How are you? Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Chair Yarborough and Supervisors, uh, of the Board and to our guests and visitors. We're gonna cover some important safety information like we always do before we start our board meeting. I'd like everyone facing the front of the room to please notice there are two double doors, some on your left, some on your right. In the event of an evacuation, please use those doors to exit the building. The primary entrance is the front of the building where you entered this morning, but if you follow out the left side, these double doors here will lead you out to an exit on the backside of the building, and you can follow the path, pathway out to the front of the building. Our employees will meet at the ends of the parking lot. Please accompany them there at the ends of the parking lot until emergency personnel arrive and give us the all-clear to come back in. On your way out, if you feel comfortable enough, you can use the fire alarm pull stations that are located near the exits or the fire extinguishers that are there as well. And for your protection, we have an AED at the security desk and a first aid kit there as well. Our safety theme for this month is American Heart Health. Safety is not just about preventing slips, trips, and falls, or about wearing the right protective gear. It also includes maintaining strong physical health, and a part of strong physical health is our heart health. February is American He- Heart Month, a national campaign recognized by the National Safety Council to raise awareness about heart disease, which is the leading cause of death among American, uh, US adults throughout the country. In 2024 alone, an estimated nine hundred and thirty-one thousand heart-related deaths occurred nationwide. Taking care of your heart health is essential, but in critical moments, sometimes it's not enough. According to the American Heart Association, performing CPR immediately when needed can double or even triple a person's chance of survival in an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest situation. Recently, a young boy's life was saved right here in the district thanks to the swift actions of his mother, cast members, and our very own District Fire Department. Their quick response made all the difference. So we encourage everyone to support their heart health. We strongly encourage everyone, especially parents, to seek out CPR and AED training because the life you save could be that of your own child. Prioritizing heart health is not just a personal responsibility, it's our commitment to safety in the workplace and in the community. I wanna, uh, welcome Chair Yarborough, Supervisor Gilbert, and Supervisor Workman. Welcome to the team. We're glad to have you, and everyone, please enjoy the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Um, before we move into the public comment, are there any comments from anyone on the board? Seeing none? Alright, are there any public comments? Ms. Kapalusis, none? Alright, seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Consent agenda passes. We're moving on to the reports. Ms. Kapalusis.
Thank you, Chair. And, uh, I just wanna say thank you to all five of you. I know this is a volunteer job. The rest of us here get paid to be here. Um, but thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your support. We look forward to showing you all the amazing things that this team does, um, as we go forward. Um, just wanna give just a brief update and a couple announcements. First of all, to add on to what Eddie said, we are doing for our team CPR training led by our team at the Fire Department, so I'd love for everyone to do it. I think we're gonna do it at SLT, so be warned, we're all gonna have CPR training. Um, since January, I'll just give you a couple updates. We've hired eight new team members. We have quite a few vacancies out there that we're working to fill as well. Um, the state Fire Marshal recently appointed our own Scott Underwood from Eric, uh, Ferrari's team to, uh, lead, to be the lead instructor for the 2025 Honor Guard Academy, and he will be the lead coordinator for the Florida Fallen Firefighter Memorial. So we'll keep y'all updated on that. It's a real honor to, to get that, and we are, uh, very excited for him and, um, just a great representation of our team. Um, I wanna do a particular shout-out to Susan and the finance team. As you will see in a couple, in a few short minutes that, um, our audited financials were reported, that team works really hard on making sure that we see, that we get, as I call it, a clean bill of health. Um, and that's what we got, and grateful, Susan, for you and your team, so appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. Um, and then, uh, I'm looking at Ella, 'cause Ella was part of that. Um, on February sixth, eight of our team members went and volunteered and worked on a house for Habitat for Humanity. Um, it was quite, quite, uh, an interesting adventure because they had an all-night power test the day after that. So, uh, we had some exhausted people, but well worth it, and just appreciate what they do in our community. Um, and then just a couple of quick, quick things to give you kind of the, wha- what our team does on a regular basis. The Building Department already this year has issued over twenty-two hundred permits. They've processed over thirty-three hundred, uh, plan reviews and conducted over ten thousand eight hundred inspections. Um, on the Environmental Services Team, uh, they, they always stay pretty busy. Um, they just got our new flock of chickens to do our sampling with, and they've already done about a hundred and eight different, uh, blood samples, um, have been, uh, have been, um, sampled. And then, when you look at, uh, fifteen hundred samples collected and over, um, almost four thousand tests conducted on those samples from the water. Um, a lot of work goes on here, and it's really just the blocking and the tackling that no one ever sees, no one ever pays attention to until something goes wrong, but, uh, they do a great job and, and with quite diligence each and every day. For the new members, we're in the process of updating our comp plan. So we did a public hearing, um, after the first of the year. Um, our team, led by Catherine and Lee, have, uh, been meeting with lots of our stakeholders. Um, they've briefed the two cities, so we're in the process of updating that. We will, um, provide you with a calendar of what's left to do before it comes back before, uh, you as a board. And, um, always, Craig, hats off to the construction team. Great progress on World Drive North. Um, that has been a project that, the gift that keeps on giving. Um, it, we've been working on the utility piece, and now, uh, Craig's team is actually getting to the road part and, um, been pretty amazing. So that's my update for today, and, um, once again, any questions or anything I can answer, happy to do so.
Um, thank you, Ms. Kapalusis. Any questions? Alright, seeing none. Uh, I think, Mr. Sant, you have the item coming up here. Do we have a motion to approve item eight point one?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Alright, Mr. Sant, you wanna tell us what this is, sir?
Sure. Sorry, get my stuff ready. Good morning, uh, Chairwoman Yarborough, fellow members of the board. This project, uh, this is for the Osceola Parkway-World Drive Interchange Reservicing and Guardrail Replacement Project. Basically, this is, uh, project involves MOT erosion control, guardrail removal and replacement, uh, milling and reserving and installation of signage and pavement markings. Um, work areas, milling reserving is, uh, along the world, uh, I'm sorry, which is Osceola Parkway, um, at World Drive Interchange too. It's kind of a little tough to see with the, uh, exhibit, but everything in yellow. On the screen right there, we're milling reserving. It includes Osceola Parkway, um, basically from World Drive to, uh, BBD. It also includes all four clover leaves of the World Drive and, uh, Osceola Corridor. Um, it's about fifty-one thousand linear foot of travel lanes or equalling nine point six miles of linear travel lane milling and reserving on this project. Also includes some guardrail replacements. Three general locations, first general locations around the Upcott Center Drive, uh, area. There's eighteen total guardrail replacement, um, locations involved in this project. Also along the World Drive Corridor, um, in the exhibit, you can see some of the areas. And then finishing up in the Osceola Parkway area too. Total's about nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five linear foot of guardrail replacement included in this project. Project went out to, uh, out to bid by our, um, procurement department, December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we received four bids. Watson Civil Construction Incorporated is the lowest responsive, um, and reasonable bidder. Um, so what we're doing here, we're requesting approval for contract C zero zero six six five eight for Watson Site Civil Construction in the amount of four million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Funding is derived from Planning Engineering's planned work budget with two funds.
Okay. Uh, any questions or discussion? Alright, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sant.
Excellent.
Moving on to item nine one, uh, CFO Hickon Botham. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I will be reviewing the, uh, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four annual financial statements. And thank you, Stephanie, for the, um, shout-out. I also want to specifically, um, mention Heidi Powell, who compiles these statements for us and all the members of my team who every day are doing transactions, um, that equal totaling up to this, um, statement. So our, wait, I gotta drive. Which one? This one? Okay. He used to drive for me, but now he doesn't anymore. And our fiscal year ended on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And as soon as I'm done with the highlights, I'm going to call up, uh, Brian Liffick and Justin Conley from our auditors, Cherry Beckett, to go over the audit review. Oh my gosh. Okay, alright. Um, so, uh, what does the auditors do? Um, one of the main things they do is express an opinion on our district's financial statements. They also issue variance reports on internal control and compliance that are listed here. For fiscal year ended two thousand and twenty-four, we do have an increase in our ending net position of ninety-five million dollars, taking us from six hundred and thirty million to seven hundred and twenty-five million. Of that, uh, ninety-five million, eleven million was an increase in the utility operations, and eighty-four million was an increase in the, um, governmental activities. And this does include a twenty-six million dollar transfer from utilities, um, to governmental for their contribution of World Drive North Phase Three, um, utility relocation. Also adding to the, um, increase in our net position is we had principal payments of fifty-eight point four million dollars on our long-term debt. So decreasing our long-term debt from eight hundred and fifty-five million to seven hundred and ninety-one million. We didn't have in fiscal year twenty-four any other activity in our debt, no additions, no refundings. Um, some board members will recall, when I come back and for two thousand twenty-five, we did issue debt in October, which will be in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Again, mostly for World Drive North Phase Three. The district does participate in the Florida Retirement System, and as such, we are required to record our proportionate share, which is given to us from the Florida Retirement System. And we had an increase of six point one million in this fiscal year, and our proportionate share of the total Florida Retirement System is point one four seven percent. Also, the district has an OPEB liability, um, other post-employment benefits, and we have an actuarial calculation of this, and we did have an increase from fifty million to fifty-nine million. And, um, our interest and investment gains of twenty point seven million. And just to give you some perception on that, in fiscal year twenty-three, we had thirteen point six million, but in fiscal year twenty-two, we actually had an investment loss of eight point eight million. So of the twenty point seven million, eight million is actually interest earned, and then we have unrealized gain. We have to, um, market our investments on nine thirty, and that is twelve point million of the twenty million. This is just a five-year look of governmental, um, general fund and debt service, tax revenue and expenses. You'll see a slight dip in twenty-one. Again, that's, uh, COVID-related. And then overall, you'll see just a general uptick. You might notice that the revenue taxes, which is the lighter shade of blue, is often less than the darker shade, which is our expenditures. That's because each year, when we have additional, uh, fund balance, we generally budget to use that up and not to, um, just increase our fund balance. Utility revenue and expenses going from, um, five years ago, around one hundred and fifty million, up to this year, two hundred million. And you'll actually see between twenty-three and twenty-four, pretty much basically the same slight decrease. Total assets on the government side, nine hundred and fifty-eight million. The largest portion of that being infrastructure, which is our bridges, roads, and our water drainage structures. And utility operations, total three hundred and four million, which their largest portion is plants and systems, things providing the service. Outstanding debt, six hundred and sixteen million on the government side, and on the utility side, a hundred and thirty-nine million. And then a look at our credit ratings with a scale of triple A, um, being the best to D being the last. We are, um, solid As, and we are considered good investment-grade credit. Then who are the users and what do we do with this financial report? We will report to the State of Florida, the Auditor General, Department of Financial Services, Department of Revenue. We will also, um, report to the SEC and Emma. Rating agencies, insurance, bondholders, investments, as well as will be posted on our website for taxpayers and utility customers. And then just looking forward at our current year, just a reminder for our two thousand twenty-five budget, we did set a millage rate of thirteen point oh eight three, three mils, um, which is slightly up from our twenty-four millage of twelve point nine five mils. Um, revenues total two hundred and twelve million, expenditures two hundred and eight million, eighteen million. And then debt service, we budgeted, uh, debt service coverage of one point nine one. Our bond requirements is one point one, so we are, um, budgeting to cover that and more. And this time, I'll call up Brian and Justin.
Alright, thank you. Hello, board members. Uh, excited to be here today, uh, discuss our, uh, audit. I know Susan got to talk about the fun stuff as an auditor, uh, the, the number side of things, but I'll be going through our required communication items as your external auditors. Um, so here's our agenda for today. Much of those items are required communication. Uh, I'll finish off with some of our financial reporting changes to kind of be on the lookout for future periods. Um, but first, I'll just go through our client service team. As Susan mentioned, myself, uh, I'm Brian Liffick, your engagement partner, uh, overseeing all of our services we provide for the district. Uh, also with me here today, Justin Conley, who's sitting there next to me. He was our manager, kind of doing all the hard work, uh, all the heavy lifting throughout the engagement. Additionally, we have Lauren Strope, a second partner reviewer. You know, it's also often very important to have a second set of eyes, uh, internally on our end to just to make sure that the quality i- is there. And then, uh, moving on, our results, um, as, uh, Stephanie had mentioned, the good, clean audit opinion, we call it an unmodified opinion, um, but it is for the year ended, uh, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. We did issue that a couple, or a week ago, um, uh, that it was done in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards. Additionally, in the financial statement packet, we do include the, uh, report on compliance with local government investment policies as required by the state, as well as the bond trust indenture compliance and the Full Florida Auditor General Management Letter. As it pertains to internal control documentation, we do look over that internal control documentation, ensuring that we're understanding that as a basis for, uh, our account, or our auditing procedures, how we're gonna test the balances throughout the year. Um, we do not express an opinion on that information, uh, on the effectiveness of the internal controls. However, if we do become aware of any, uh, weaknesses that would be, uh, beneficial, we do communicate those. Uh, here are the definitions of the most significant type of deficiencies in internal control. Happy to announce that there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as a result of our procedures. Additionally, um, last year, we did have a couple management letter comments, uh, related to best practices, and, and those were all conquered by the team and, and appropriately, uh, implemented, so, so hats off to them. Corrected or uncorrected misstatements. We had no uncorrected or corrected misstatements as a result of our procedures. So, uh, the financial statement numbers you have before you were, uh, all a result of, of appropriate accounting on, on the team's side. Moving into our qualitative aspects of accounting practices. Um, the financial statements do have within them the significant accounting policies. Those are disclosed in Note One of the financial statements. Um, and then there were no new accounting policies adopted during the year. There was one new GASB standard, which is, uh, your, your authoritative guidance for, uh, financial statements, but it dealt with, uh, corrections of errors and restatements, which there were none this year. Uh, related party transactions and relationships. As part of our audit, we do evaluate, uh, the identification of, the accounting for, and the disclosure of any related party transactions. Um, you'll see that disclosed within the financial statements in Note Eight. Um, there, we, on the left side, you'll see our bullets of, of what we do related to those related parties, um, but there was nothing to note that was inaccurate or in non-compliance. Uh, significant and unusual transactions. Um, we did not note any transactions that lacked authoritative guidance. Uh, all significant transactions were inco- included in the proper, uh, counting period, and we noted no significant unusual transactions. As, uh, um, it was mentioned, uh, there was the twenty-six million dollar transfer. Um, that was a significant amount, but nothing unusual about that transaction, and it was all accounted for appropriately. Um, moving on to significant estimates. Um, most financial statements have significant estimates. Here within the bullet points, you'll see, uh, the, the most significant estimates that impact the district's financial statements, being depreciable lives of capital assets, uh, the option value of the fair, uh, fuel derivatives, fair value of the assets and the investments, and self-insurance, and then, uh, the defined benefit plan, pension plan, OPEB, uh, liabilities, deferred inflows and outflows. We do evaluate the key factors and assumptions used to develop those estimates, and, and we concluded that those were reasonable estimates. Uh, as far as the financial statement disclosures, here you'll see, uh, the financial statements were very neutral, consistent, and clear. We had no, uh, accounting pronouncements to implement that changed any of the disclosures. I do bring attention to the most significant, or most sensitive disclosure, that Note Eight, that has the related party transactions that, that really ha- houses some of those, uh, unique transactions and, and, uh, discloses those appropriately. As far as independence considerations, you do wanna make sure your external auditors do maintain their, uh, independence. Uh, here on the left, you'll see we do provide assistance with preparing and tracking the subscription-based information technology agreements and leases. Uh, those were two recent accounting standards within the past two years. Uh, so we have, uh, our advisory team helping the team, uh, categorize those and, and record that information. But ultimately, management does maintain the, uh, responsibility for that information, reviews it. Uh, therefore, we do meet our ethical responsibilities to maintain our independence. Uh, our other required communications, difficulties or disagreements with management. Happy to say, uh, that Susan, Heidi, and the team were very, uh, forthcoming, and, and all information that we needed throughout the audit was, was there and at our fingertips, so, uh, kudos to them. So there were no difficulties or disagreements as, as a result of our audit procedures. Uh, auditor consultations, there were no difficulties, uh, or contentious items that we needed to consult outside of our engagement team. And then management representations, we do obtain a management representation letter at the end of the audit. Uh, that was signed in, uh, in accordance with the, uh, financial statement date there. And then moving on, uh, management consultations, there were no, uh, if, if, uh, management were to go to an outside accounting firm to, to seek their second opinion on anything, we did inquire to that, and there were no such, uh, second opinions or management consultations. Other findings or issues, there was nothing, uh, outside the normal course of business, um, that was discussed that needed to be brought up today, uh, as far as any findings or issues. Uh, fraud or illegal acts, there were no fraud, illegal acts, or violations of laws or regulations noted in our procedures. And then finally, there were no events or conditions that indicated substantial doubt about the district's ability as a going concern. Other matters, uh, required supplemental information, the financial statements do contain the management discussion and analysis, as well as the, uh, as well as the uh information at the back of the financial statements that are required supplementary information as required by GASB. Uh that information, we do have a separate opinion on um in relation to our normal audit opinion. We do not express an opinion on or provide any assurance of the information. However, we do uh agree that information back to the financial statements and that, and that is standard practice related to those required supplementary information pieces. And then finally, the last slide I have here today are the financial reporting changes. Uh on the horizon, we do have four new uh GASB standards that have been issued to this point. Um a couple of these will not have really that much of an impact for the district, uh that being compensated absences, cer- uh certain risk disclosures. And um those are going to be uh next year. Uh so we'll be just discussing with management, making sure that they're, they're conquered those and, and comfortable with uh any changes to the numbers. GASB one oh three will be in twenty twenty-six. That will have some changes more to the presentation of the financial statements. So more to come on that one as we work through with management, but just putting that on the radar that that one may, may change some of the uh the items in management discussion and analysis sections as well as other uh notes. And then finally, disclosures on certain capital assets, another one that will be due in twenty twenty-six. Uh more to come on that one as we discuss with management, but don't anticipate very much changes as far as the numbers are concerned. And with that, I will turn it back over. Appreciate being here with you all today.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian or myself? Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, CFO Hickon Botham. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Liffick. Did I say it correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh do we have a motion to accept the audit?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's accepted. I think we are concluded with business. Ms. Kapalusis, yes? All right, um I, no, I, I would normally adjourn. I'm not familiar with this board, so I'm gonna look to the general counsel. Do you have a rule that requires a motion to adjourn?
There's no rule. You can do whatever.
Okay, all right, so we will stand adjourned then. Thank you. All right, thanks so much.